Call this meeting of the Champagne County Board of Appeals, we have ELO County Facilities and Highway Department. It's Thursday, the limit is around eight point twelve. Time is six fifteen. Please turn off your cell phones and turn them down. Roll call, please.
Petrie? Here. Quizzenberry, Richards, Rosales, Schrader.
Here.
Richards is here.
Here.
Ammons.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bensel.
Irbsen.
Here.
Betts.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Covert.
Friend.
Esri.
Here.
Holderfield.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler.
Here.
Kurtz.
Here.
Leganine.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Michaels. Mitchell. Moser.
Here.
O'Connor.
Still no.
Wyble.
Yeah, of course. Part about that Mr. Menzel, Mr. Quizzenberry, and Mrs. Hope Till, are you getting me they've got to make this meeting tonight? Seek approval of the minutes for me in the hold for October 2nd, 2012. I approve. The line item seconded by Carol Abrams. Discussion on the minutes. See not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Seek approval of the agenda, meeting again or not.
So good.
Remove by Mr. Eric Second, Mr. James. Discussion on the agenda. See not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Public participation. Please step up in the podiums to be clearly in the seats.
My name is David Thies, 807 South McKinley in Champagne, and I am an attorney with the firm of Weber and Thies in Urbana. I'm here tonight as attorney for the Sangamon Valley Water District. One of the matters that is before you is the possibility of a recommendation relating to a request for rezoning property to be used by our client, Sangamon Valley, in conjunction with an expansion of a water treatment facility. I'm here tonight with several people from the district. Kerry Gifford is here. He's the general manager of the district, and he'll speak in a moment about the more technical aspects of the project, as well as the need for it. Because there's been a lot of discussion about it, I want to address briefly the process that is being used, because there has been some controversy that surrounds the process. I'm here, hopefully, to convince you to make a recommendation to approve the zoning change. This is something that started a while back and is growing out of a need for our client to continue to expand facilities, existing facilities, that are used to treat and distribute the water, serving a number of people in the county, many out in the outskirts of Mohammed, some within Mohammed, some outside of Mohammed. What we're here to do tonight, and this is part of what I wanted to try to show you, is that we're not really at the point of impending doom and gloom, which is what I've been hearing throughout the community. At least, I don't think we are there, nor do I think we need to be. This is all part of the normal process. We filed our petition, and it's gone before the Zoning Board of Appeals, because our property is in the county. It's county zoning that we're asking for. This is really to clean up some existing situations that exist with our facility. There was a variance that was required. There was a special use permit that was required. All of that has been granted, and as a matter of land use policy, the zoning board has recommended that the change be approved. That recommendation includes discussion of what your ordinances say. Your ordinances say that if approved, the zoning change would include a requirement that the ordinances of Mohammed be complied with, and no one has ever suggested that that's not the case. There was even a suggestion in the beginning of the Zoning Board of Appeals process that that be included as a condition, and in the end, that really wasn't necessary. Your ordinances already say that. There has been some suggestion that we should have gone to the village of Mohammed beforehand, and really, that's a premature kind of a thing, because it starts with the zoning request. It's now technically and formally that we would talk to Mohammed. Nonetheless, as a part of this process, there have been ongoing discussions with Mohammed, and they've basically come down to one issue, and that is that the Sangamon Valley does not feel that it should be obliged by Mohammed as a result of its subdivision ordinance to annex to the village. Discussions have taken place where our client, Sangamon Valley, has been very open in its desire to have an intergovernmental agreement. Sangamon Valley is basically a unit of local government. Mohammed is the same. We've proposed an agreement, although the details, we never got to the point where we could work them out, but I don't have a lot of doubt that all of the land use issues that normally are dealt with would be worked out. I haven't heard of a single objection that is a problem. The reason we want to do that by an intergovernmental agreement, as opposed to merely having a minor subdivision approved, is that the minor subdivision process in Mohammed would require annexation. And out of respect for the integrity of Sangamon Valley as a unit of local government, we've asked that this arrangement be worked on as an intergovernmental agreement, and that the requirement of annexation be waived, that it not be imposed upon us because of the control issue. I'll talk a lot more later about that as issues come up. I just want to mention one other thing. There's a suggestion that litigation is about to be filed, and nothing could be further than the truth. We've attempted to work out an intergovernmental agreement. We don't want litigation. There are a million ways to solve the problems that exist here. And from a land use point of view, the hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals, the recommendations from your staff, make it clear that we're doing everything we need to do. This is a slam dunk, because we're cleaning up an existing site. We're addressing a need, and the only issue is whether this facility should be required to be annexed to the village. This is not a private development. This is not any one individual's investment. This is a facility that is serving a lot of people who are going to need the water that is distributed by Sangamon Valley. So, and out of respect for the integrity of this unit of local government, we ask that you help us by approving this, overriding the protests that has come, protests that we don't exactly understand, which I think will be the greatest encouragement you could give to the parties to get together. Something we've already tried to do, but we've been rebuffed in our attempt to come up with an intergovernmental agreement. Thank you very much. I'll answer questions if there are any.
Kerry Gifford.
Good evening, everyone. Kerry Gifford, 1106 South Maryhead Drive, Mohammed, Illinois. I am the general manager for Sangamon Valley Water. Sangamon Valley Public Water District is in Mohammed. It's north of 74 and east of 47. We serve about 4500 water and wastewater customers. We're in private branch here now. We have a situation where EPA says you've got to have, off your annual average use, a day's worth of storage, of garbage storage. We have thirty. That has been our engineering evaluation that EPA does every two years for the surveyors, warning us to get more storage. The drought this summer, we were hitting just with the peak days, right at what we need with the buffer capacity, we need fire protection. So, running on the high end, fire protection is currently a concern. So, we are in a critical situation. You have to get this water plant going. I'm excited about what we're trying to do. We're working with Smart Energy Design Assistance Center of the University of Illinois Architectural Department to come up with green, energy-efficient buildings. We're using new technology. It's green technology, which put us salts to the river. I'm here just to talk about the technical part of this, as far as what the operations are, but that's why we're at what we're doing. I just respect, I request that you recommend the optimal approach.
See any questions? No questions at this time of night. Next is Jeremy Boberman.
Well, first, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate the board on how far the discourse around Champagne's criminal justice system has come in the past nine months. I've watched the discussion in this room shift from a narrow, short-sighted focus on facilities to an open-minded consideration of and commitment to the health and safety of the community we all live in. I'm hoping to contribute to that discussion tonight by calling to mind an issue which has fallen by the wayside recently, and that's the public safety sales tax. Back in the spring, at the request of the board, County Administrator Deb Bucie presented a projected funding model for a $20 million jail expansion. In that model, she suggested that, starting in 2014, the fulfillment of some portion of the county's current debt obligation, as backed by the public safety sales tax, would make it possible to begin paying interest on bonds which would be necessary to take out in order to begin the construction project which was being discussed at that time. The information distributed by Ms. Bucie indicated that we would be able to begin paying a little less than half a million dollars on the new debt starting in 2014. For the next five years after that, Ms. Bucie wrote that just shy of a million dollars' worth of the revenue from the public safety sales tax could be dedicated to servicing the new bonds. For the next nineteen years thereafter, from 2020 to 2039, Ms. Bucie's spreadsheet indicated that more than $1.5 million from the sales tax could be made available in order to pay off $20 million in bonds by 2040. I mention this at the current juncture, because I wish to offer an alternate perspective to the commonly-held notion that the county is broke. Certainly, the county is broke when it comes to funding the public defender's office, which has seen a decline in expenditures, the loss of at least one full-time equivalent position, salary freezes, and cuts to their commodities and services budgets, despite the fact that their collective revenues have been on the rise. The actual 2010 expenditures by the public defender's office in this county totaled $969,693. The debt service on a $20 million jail expansion in 2015 alone was projected by the county administrator to be $934,900. Only about one-ninth of this amount would be necessary to restore the public defender's budget to its level in 2008. Alternately, were that entire amount to be made available to the thirteen attorneys who serve the indigent defendants of this county, they would just about have fiscal parity with their counterparts in the state's attorney's office. To take another tack, let's look at Community Elements, whose annual revenue has also been steadily declining for at least the last five years. In 2008, Community Elements' total revenue was about $10.5 million. The Champagne County Mental Health Board's grant made up eight percent of that amount. In 2011, they collected $9.3 million, and the Mental Health Board's grant was eight percent of that amount. So, in a time of fiscal hemorrhage, the county board's support for low-cost, high-quality mental health services in this county declined to the tune of about $100,000. Here, too, it appears the county is unable or unwilling to provide the support we agree our community needs so desperately. According to the county administrator's projections, beginning in 2019, the county will have public safety funds available, which could restore Community Elements and the Public Defender's Office to 2008 service levels, with more than 300 grand left over to support the expansion or inception of a wide variety of economic and/or social programs, as well as alternatives to incarceration, which would actually promote public safety in Champagne. Thank you for your time.
Say hello to public participation. All right, next up is communications. I have a couple. First of all, opportunity aggravation, refer to the past, if we have public here, we have another public here. The next count, we also have to make some decisions on the numbers that we feed to that program. So, please be prepared to bag on that next count meeting. And the next count, we're also going to vote on our budget, so if you plan on making any amendments to that budget or changes, do it at the count. Don't wait for the final meeting, because they have to lock the numbers, have to crunch, make the changes. Next time is, in December, we often cancel some of the meetings, and Deb has talked to some of the head of certain areas. Which ones do you recommend we?
Well, the meetings for the first week in December would be the meetings that are tonight's agenda. ELO County Facilities, County Highway, and at this time, all three of those department heads don't believe that they will need to hold meetings in December, because we won't even know who the committee members or chairs of those committees are until the third, and the first meeting will be on the fourth. We are suggesting that those meetings be canceled in December. We have typically done this in the past, so that we would just have the committee at the whole on December 11, and then the county board meeting on the Monday.
Any objections? Finally, I want to say that normally, when I look out, where do I see Mr. James? Today, I don't. What a pleasure that is. I see James.
You'll miss me.
Any other communications from the board? All right, County Facilities. Mr. Betts, you can stay right there, I think. Mr. Reinhardt around?
Right here.
Has everyone received a copy of the fiscal plan monthly report? Mr. Reinhardt, anything you wish to highlight?
There is nothing I wish to highlight on the report. Are we answering questions?
Mr. Richards.
I do have a question, Mr. Reinhardt. We're almost done with this fiscal year. Can you just take a look at this and tell us how much you think these light items are basically going to be, under or over, if everything's basically going to hit budget with this fiscal year schedule?
I think all the repair and maintenance light items will be really close to being in our own budget as we're preparing now. I do expect a certain amount of savings in the utilities, gas, and what, at this time, I'm not prepared to say. We're still at 63% of the gas service, with only two months of the building left. Mother Nature good to us, we'll come up to good shape.
Okay, my biggest problem.
Any other questions regarding the report? Yes, Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to ask when the completion of Lyle Shield will be, and an update on the downtown facility. I just.
We will get to that in the next day of this fiscal plan.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Petrie.
There's only one building then fitted with electrical saving device, or two?
Two.
Two, yeah, okay. Is it possible, in another month, to give us another column on the report specifically targeting those two buildings, so we can see the differential of what these cost last year, I guess, compared to what these are costing this year?
I think we can do that, yes. Not necessarily on this report, or some part of.
Or some way, however works best for you to do it, but it would be nice just to see those comparisons, so we can appreciate what all your efforts have brought forward.
Mr. White.
I'm suggesting that in this report, pull them off, because obviously, prices can always vary, so we could hope.
Okay. Any other questions? Chair, we're negotiating a motion to receive in place of Lyle. Minister Esri, seconded by Ms. Ammons. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. The Art Barb Health Project, they said we have a letter from Burns Plan, so, Mr. Reinhardt.
On page eight, of your agenda, is the, I will today call it the final report for the two adjacent Alhambra and General Road construction projects, which includes the East Campus Site store line project. We did adjust the expression to show the change orders issued as requested for the change orders for cross-construction group project, and as of now, all change orders completed, all vital payments have been made, all documents have been received. The project is officially closed down.
The downtown jail facility, give us a little update on that.
You have a handout, this location, I do, with a brief overview of where we're at. As you remember, back in August, County worked through funding for the limited group repairs for $24,000. No coal black, looking, was a war debt project, $21,016. Then during the month, separate, the county worked through the additional funding, $50,000, and we added the remaining dollars from the limited group repairs to that, leaving us accounts of $52,884. With that, as I reported last month, the county sheriff identified improvements that were prioritized, and then purchasers were issued to following companies. R D Cox Masonry, for the cocking and repairment, coping above roof line in the exterior expansion joint, which is approximately three or four foot down around the perimeter building, which is the roof line and everything above it, and the obvious cracks and fissures where we had expansion on the northeast and northwest corners of the building. Roster Construction was the, gave us the best price for shower stall wall sheeting, which is an aluminum sheeting installed in the block surface, which has had multiple coats of paint. And Roster Construction was also awarded sure for the painting of the day rooms of A, B, J, and K. If you're wondering why they chose those particular cell blocks and those rooms, it's because we, this fiscal plan has painted part of the day rooms, and on two of the cell blocks, this area will finish out, all of the west side where they house the females and other areas, and the isolation cells of A and B. And the last item that we did was to replace the security locks we've ever purchased, the obsolete security locks in the main corridors, which are heavily used, much more than the individual cell doors. On the second page is a breakdown of all of the, all the contractors, supplies prices, categories in which we group them, and price quotes, and the purchase orders. I would like to point out on the page, on second page, that we structured the shower stall pricing and the day room pricing individually, individually priced by each person, with the expectation that we would not be able to complete them. So, you'll see that the roster of day room painting, roster of construction, which was a total price, painting everything it needed to be, was $13,660. With the prioritizing projects, all we had left that we were able to do was $4,580 worth of work. So, I hope you explain, so when we're all finished with all the purchasers issued, there was only a balance of $502 left on the project, as money's your reward in this tour.
Questions from the members of the board? Yes, Mr. James?
So, you're saying on the painting, he was only able to do so much of it, not all of it?
That is correct.
So, his bid was lowered. But I'm just amazed, when I look at bidding, and they all were given the same spec sheets, I'm sure, that, look at the range of quotes there.
We were quite surprised, I guess, I agree.
Wow. Especially on the shower stalls and the day room painting, but I'm glad that work was done. I'm sure everybody in this room feels that way, so, thank you.
Mr. Adams.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate you putting it together. I know through this, I do kind of short notice from the end of the year. I'm impressed with what we have been able to get done this year, but we'll definitely be asking you to give us an update as far as what still remains to be done in the coming calendar year. Seems like the dollar amount that was appropriate, the dollar amount that was allocated was based, not necessarily on saying, you know, okay, this is all we need to spend, but this is probably all we could get done this year. So, we'll be revisiting this next year, I hope.
Any other questions from members of the board? Yes, Ms. Petrie.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the day room painting and have a little more conversation on the, this low bid. What type of painting was used?
Water base.
I mean, this is really low.
That one was really low for the rest of our, we specified the exact date of the O C stage specified by Sherman Williams, and a water-based latex for the, for the living room area, but a water-based enamel for the area going back to showers. And they were just by price quoted equal or better than they all did, which is why that price was at that point.
Any other questions from members of the board? The next matter is about the Lyle Shield reading rooms.
At this point, as I say, it's completely empty. We're scheduled to, we're scheduled to work Saturday morning. I have some employees, we're going to actually do a, bringing in electric jackhammers. We're going to remove the race platform, where the county board chairman set in the past, and a little video room is ready for, see if you're going to, the schedule will be there next Tuesday. We have carpet in stock. We are hating around running, so we'll be ready for December 1, we hope.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. James.
Can I get a block of that concrete as a going-away gift?
How big?
Oh, as big as you can get, because I want to drop it in his car.
You've watched two new road weather episodes. Ms. Burson.
Could we not nail the equipment, the desks and things down until we dry them for a few weeks?
Excuse me, I did not say that.
Could we not nail down the desks and things until we've dried them for a few weeks to see?
None of the furniture will be nailed down, screwed down, fastened before. With the exception that we have to put in a tivestone floor box for where we anticipate the public participation table to be, so we can have data connection and power there, and the staff table. Other than that, none of the county board tables are going to be fastened in any position.
Further questions? Thank you, Ellen. Should the chair's report? This is my life last night as chair of facilities. It has been a very interesting, challenging experience. I served ten years as chair of the policy committee, and these two years dealt much rougher than ten years on policy, which is not to say it has been a bad experience. It has been a very interesting, vibrant experience. I think that the challenges that we've seen with regard to the jail issues are good, solid challenges. It has made all of us think, it has made all of us reconsider some of our built-in notions, and I think that's good. I feel very lucky to have served in this board of more years than I care to, remember, that's serving with some really incredibly interesting and intelligent and committed people. People don't run for the county board for the money, that's for sure, not for $45. You do it because you care about your community, whether you're a Democrat, Republican, you're a member of the Champagne County Board, and you're a member of the larger community. County as a form of government is one of the oldest forms of government in Western civilization. You can track it back almost 1,200 years in Britain and in France. It's a very honorable unit of government. And we've been very, very lucky in this community to have very dedicated servants of the community on this board. Some great people, one of whom spoke tonight to David Dave Thies, who served on this board. I have served with just incredible people. Steve Moser and I do not agree on very much, but I think we have always respected each other. We got together and worked our butts off to help build a new courthouse. We worked on the old jail project, the youth detention project, all sorts of facilities. We have been blessed, when I started out on this board, with Jackie White as our administrator, and Jackie and I had a intense relationship, but I totally respect her financial abilities. I worked with Danny Enlund and Deb Bucie, who is a gem, she is the star, as far as I'm concerned, of administrators anywhere, and I include the entire university. She is just an incredible person to work with. She's straightforward, honest, gives you the facts. She'll give you opinion if you push, but she knows the role of an administrator. I have served under a number of chairs. Mr. Shields, who named the room after, and it's well-earned. He is still one of my favorite members of the board. He is one of the most honorable, decent people I have ever worked with. Bud Barker, who, I can't lie, Bud and I never got along, but he did move things in various directions. Mr. Moser and I had a good relationship. I could always walk in his office and talk. I enjoyed working with Pat Avery and Barbara Saki. And one of my favorite people on this board is Pius Wyble. He is a calm, gentle person, who I think does not particularly enjoy politics, but he has been very honorable and very decent as your board chair. And I think it's a loss to this county that he is not going to be on the board, but I understand why he's leaving, because I'm doing it, too. We do have larger lives. But I have enjoyed every member of the board. I've enjoyed serving as chair of this. But I have enjoyed every member of the board, I've enjoyed serving as chair of facilities, all of them, and great, great board and contributing ideas. Thank you. I don't think... I have no other business, there's not any discussion. Ms. Collins?
Well, the first thing we have for consideration was in county and township motor fuel tax claim for October two thousand and twelve.
Move approved. Second.
Move and approve. Any discussion?
We didn't see the discussion, it's turned to requests. It's been basically because I don't want to pop through all of the package, keep up running total, but is there some way, when you give us this report, if you could sort of give us the, the running total we spent and the remaining balance, because that would be most helpful in going a period in my day?
For the motor fuel tax? Not on the townships, probably, because that's kind of out of our control, because that's controlled by the township highway commissioners. But on the county side, yes, we could do that.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone? Next thing is our county engineer's report.
Okay, item B is a, we, we've talked about this project in previous meetings, the Dewey Fisher Road project, which starts at Saint Thomas Moore High School, which is the northerly city limits of the city of Champaign, and goes up to U.S. Route 136. This is a resolution, kind of as a holding spot. Don't believe that we can build County Highway One for that distance for a million dollars, that's, that might have happened back in the sixties, but it won't happen now. We plan on multiple, well, we have applied for multiple different funding sources for this project. We actually have one point six million dollars in federal dollars. We have applied for nine hundred thousand dollars in what is called Truck Access Route Program dollars, which is basically dollars to build a roadway to the eighty thousand pound truck route standards. And we're also applying for Highway Safety Improvement Project dollars, which are dollars, obviously, for safety improvements, to widen shoulders, put in rumble strips, do that kind of work to improve the safety of the road like we did down on Monticello Road. So we anticipate when this project is done, it'll look very similar in style when you drive it down it as the Monticello Road project looked when we finished that. So this million dollars is an appropriation, basically, to get the project started, to give it a sec, give it a section number, have motor fuel tax money appropriated to it so we can begin the process. It's a project that's not going to happen next summer, but it's a two thousand and fourteen project, but we need to buy a rideaway, we need to do engineering, we need to do a lot of things prior to starting this project. So we're, we're appropriating a million dollars, we'll probably be back to appropriate the remainder of the balance that we don't get through these other funds at some other point, but this is just a resolution to kind of begin the process on the project. So that's...
Is there any plan to alter the offset of the correction line?
No.
You're going to build on the same rideaway?
Yes.
We're basically planning on purchasing, this is, you know, from far, when you're looking down from an airplane, but about ten feet on either side of the roadway in order to incorporate wider shoulders, wider edges, putting a paved shoulder.
That's really not bad, that it could be improved.
It could be improved, but we haven't had, to my knowledge, had any great, in my years, had any safety issues with that particular replacement there, so to do something like that would obviously be more money and more rideaway.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that kind of thing.
Should we get a move, come in and move it and accept?
Move approval.
Okay, now it's open for discussion.
There was a motion for approval.
A second.
You mentioned resources that you are planning to go to, or are you going to? Part of the conversation we had at caucus surrounded the possibility that you may not get all this money.
Yes.
And in, this is a million dollars, and I'm assuming you budgeted somewhere down the line that you feel that you have some kind of window of cushion or concept that they're going to compare for. What is that elasticity?
The, we act, we have one point six million dollars in federal dollars.
You get that already?
Yes, that's already programmed for two thousand and fourteen.
Okay.
Plus this million dollars, so that's two point six. If we didn't get the TARP money and if we didn't get the H S I P money, which are roughly a million dollars a piece, so that gets us up to four point six million dollars, and it's about a six million dollar job as we look at it right now. If we didn't get some of those funds, we'd probably downsize the project to some extent. If we didn't get the safety dollars, we wouldn't do as many safety features on the project. So we're looking, you know, if we can get all that money together, we're looking at, you know, three point six million, so we'd have to appropriate two point four, and, yeah, three point six, we'd have to appropriate two point four, basically, for motor fuel tax. We could probably go up to about three point four with our current budget, and then beyond that, we'd have to start whittling the project down.
But is there an option B, that you wouldn't whittle down the project, you would just prolong it to another year so that you have, can go right to there?
We could, yeah.
Thank you.
I'd rather do safety improvements while we're there, do it right than to do it three-force right and just disable it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone?
Item C, and you've got a map on page fourteen, which shows the Dewey Fisher Road there in yellow, which is the project we just spoke about. And then item C and D, although they're not the same project, they kind of go hand in hand because they're both bridge replacement projects along Dewey Fisher Road. You'll see up there on the northerly end of the project, both of these bridges are the old pre-cast, pre-stressed decking bridges where the steel on the bottom of them is starting to rust and show through. Do they have to be replaced at this very second? No, but it's similar to the projects that we did up on Maplewood, where all of a sudden it went from, you could see the rustings on the bottom of the bridge to, oh my gosh, we've got to post this, to ten tons. So we're trying to get out ahead of that. You don't know with these kind of bridges, how fast that deterioration is actually going to take place. So while we're working on County Highway One and in an effort to do it right and to get it all done kind of in one fell swoop, we have resolutions, and these are actual dollars, what we predicted and estimated the cost of these two projects are. Bridge C is a little longer, it's about, it's a three-span bridge, so we're estimating that at eight hundred and fifty thousand, and then item D is a single-span bridge that we're estimating at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace those two bridges. We would like to do those bridges in tandem so that we get a better price, award them in one package, basically, to one contractor. I don't believe we can close them both at the same time because there'd be houses that are trapped in between, and if you look on the map, there's only one road that goes to the east, and there's no roads that go to the west. But we're anticipating doing these projects possibly in two thousand and fourteen, or two thousand and thirteen, and possibly in two thousand and fourteen, depends on what kind of, you know, money we get on the County Highway One road project and where that's going to go, so. But we would like to get them both done at the same time, try to get a value there for doing two similar types of projects within a half a mile of each other with a, with the same contractor.
Obvious motion to move for approval on items C and D, please.
Second.
Is the move in second, now it's open for discussion.
My floor.
Jeff, these are fairly large engineering projects for these two structures.
Right.
Not real large, but fairly large. And I would like to encourage you, if at all possible, to use the local engineering firms so that the money can stay and help our local folks as much as possible.
We've been working with, since this is kind of one project, if you will, Dewey Fisher Road and two bridges, we're working with Sullivan and Associates to kind of be the engineer of the entire corridor, including bridge projects.
Thank you.
And they're a local firm.
Kirk?
Thank you. Jeff, have we discussed or had on our, for any minority contractors to update upon this project or any of your projects?
We have minority goals on all of our projects. They're not actually mandated on, on projects such as this, but they do, we do set goals for minorities. And typically, on projects of this magnitude, your minority business owners are going to be the people that do the guardrails, do the seeding, do some of the minor work. You're not going to find too many minority businesses that will build an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar bridge, but a lot of them do hire minority business enterprises for, guardrail is a big one, like I said, seeding's a big one, doing some of the minor work on the projects, yes.
And that leads me just to an information question. When there are federal dollars involved in any highway work, at the federal level, are there minority hiring requirements that come along with the acceptance of federal dollars?
There's a statewide percentage that the state has to meet, which includes all county, township, and state projects. So there's a goal on a county project, and what they do is they take all the money that they've used, let's say they spend a hundred million dollars in the state of Illinois, and ten percent of that money is from the feds, saying, you've got to spend it on minority businesses, then they aggregate that across all the projects. Yeah, it's not singular.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone?
Last item is a resolution of war, of war authority for the two thousand and thirteen township materials maintenance. As many of you know, we do all the bids and awards on behalf of the townships for their seal code aggregate as well as their gravel and stuff that they use on their roadways during summer. Each township has their own program, they set up their own amounts of aggregate that they need. We put it in a large bid every year on behalf of the townships, and it goes, goes out to bid to local truck drivers and local aggregate suppliers to get that aggregate from a supplier and haul it to a stockpile site for each township. So we're talking about, you know, probably fifty to sixty different aggregates, you know, I mean, they're not all different, but let's say a Rantoul Township might have three different aggregates, and Compromised Township might have two or three, and so you, you've got a whole list of aggregates that need to be hauled to the townships. Somebody has to award this, because the townships don't want to award them individually. The highway commissioners are responsible, as I said, for setting up their program and doing their budgeting through us for that program, but we have the, the physical bid letting, and every year, we're going to have that this year on November the twenty ninth. The reason we try to do it in November is because a lot of these guys that haul the aggregate on behalf of the townships are, they haul a lot of farm stuff, they haul grain and that kind of thing during this season, so we're trying to find that window where these guys have, you know, not much to do, where they'll give them a good price to haul these aggregates. And that, that bid opening is on November twenty ninth, and I'm just asking for the authority to go ahead and award those contracts to those little bidders that the township highway commissioners will be asking them to be awarded to, so that they can start with the aggregate hauling almost immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Is the move in second, now it's open for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
In the name of, we put D, C, and E?
And E.
And E. All right, thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you.
Quick checkup, are the closed minutes going on?
They're right here.
Okay. Do you have a closed minutes yet?
They're not.
Everybody's good. We'd like your environment, ladies, Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Lago. And John? Okay. Okay, first item up, zoning case seven one seven AM dash twelve. This is the San Juan Valley Public Water District, Rockville Enterprises LLC. Request to amend the zoning map to change the zoning district designation from an R four, multiple-family resident zoning district, to an Ag two. That's an agricultural zoning district to allow development or an expansion for an existing non-conforming water treatment plant authorized by the Zoning Board of Appeals. In related case seven one eight S dash twelve, I have a motion, please. So moved. And I have Mr. James, and I have Mr. Langenarm as a second. Thank you. The call goes to discussion, just a quick comment. The Zoning Board of Appeals unanimously recommended enactment of the map amendment on October eleventh, and its EBA also unanimously approved the related case of the special-use permit for the water treatment plant for this case. Discussion, please. Ms. Petrie?
I move that we suspend the rules so we can take advantage of some of the expertise that's in the rule.
I have a motion to suspend the rules. It's all moved by Mr. Esri, the second.
Seconded by.
I'm sorry, by Mr. Carter, sorry about that, buddy. All in favor of suspending rules? Aye. Motion carried. Gentlemen, Patsy, do you have a first question? You want to ask any of these gentlemen, or you have comments?
Mr. Tees.
Mr. Tees, you want to step to the podium? Chris Albiol, of Congress, thank you.
I remember the first name as dead.
David.
No, no, not yours.
Oh, my honor.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about the possibility of the intergovernmental agreement and if there is a timeframe work that you think might be useful for them to sit down across the table and try to resolve that, because that might take away from your presentation during public participation, is that would be a good best step.
It's the one that we've suggested as a way of accomplishing what everyone really wants to accomplish. First of all, as to the possibility, it is legally permissible to do what we're talking about here, not by, by applying to Mohammed under its subdivision ordinance, but instead to do it as a, a agreement between two, two governments. And that's what we propose to do, is to basically deal with all of the physical aspects of what Mohammed is concerned about, what the county is, is concerned about. We think we've already done that because we've built it into the, the plan that went before the, or the, the case that went before the Zoning Board of Appeals. But if there are other things, we're glad to talk about them. As far as timing, it's just a matter of sitting down and negotiating the terms. I, I don't know that, at this point, we've received any indication from Mohammed that they're willing to proceed in that direction. We've basically said, we can't make promises without seeing the wording of what the agreement would be, but we think that most issues that you're concerned about, would, other than the annexation issue, would be dealt with to their favor. We think that we, we would be doing, I, I can't find a controversy other than the annexation question. And we can do that by intergovernmental agreement. We would just provide that the requirement that the, that the facility be annexed to Mohammed would be waived. Everything else would be pretty much exactly as their ordinance requires. Timing-wise, it's really driven more by the need that Mr. Gifford described, and so I, it, that's my problem, is that we've already been to them, we've already talked with them. I don't want to misrepresent anything, they're here and can talk about it tonight, but our, our indication from them is that they're not interested in talking to us about an intergovernmental agreement.
Mr. Kirk, may I add, what our...
Yeah, please.
You may repeat that, that your company's participation, the ending up in court is not imminent, but if something like this played itself out, you'd say that could be a possibility, and it could miss and be a possibility, does the homeless or pay for that come to their family?
Well, there's a couple ways it could end up in court. I, I was expressing more our, our hope and our, and my, and our own thoughts that we don't want to go that route. There's a couple ways it could end up. The first would be that, that of course, the county is under requirements under the case law, the LaSalle Banks... the LaSalle Banks standards, to review zoning requests according to that standard. So the first litigation could happen is if the county didn't grant the zoning request, it would be exposed to that kind of case, and I'm not saying that's what will happen, but if you asked how it could happen, that would be one way. And the county would be on the hook for that. Secondly, if the petition is approved and the protest is overridden, then it's up to Sangamon Valley to decide to deal with Mohammed, and then come back to the county to ask for the various permits that are required for construction, and Mr. Hall, I think, has outlined that in his memorandum. In that scenario, if Sangamon Valley, and I'm not saying they've decided to do this, but if they decided to move ahead in some way, it would be possible that the county could end up in an enforcement action, as Mr. Hall has pointed out. Mohammed also could be in a position of litigating. That's the kind of thing that we're not going to drive. It would be a decision.
No, I'm not implying that, I just wanted to understand some of the possibilities.
I think the enforcement action, or if we were to take action based upon a feeling that the county has improperly denied the request for the amendment to the zoning map, that would be instances where the county would be on the hook for the legal issues. Pause.
Chris?
Mr. Kirk, do you know who we've represented on the floor here tonight? I thought you were saying there is, okay. Okay, I've got some questions later. I'll find Kevin's piece now, but I just want to understand. Yeah, right. Chris has a question, if you can have a stand. I guess, David, I only really got one question for you. I mean, you said during your public comment statement that your clients don't feel that they should be obligated to the role of Mohammed, but the way I read this, what you're asking the county board to do is to make a change that, under the county ordinance, that under the county ordinance effectively requires them to comply with all the requirements of the building, how it's submitted to ordinance anyway. So I guess my question is, can you characterize the basis for your client's objection to annexation, given that you're essentially, period of belonging, complying with all the other village's requirements?
Well, first of all, we're not asking that you change that provision of your ordinance yet. We're just asking if the.
My understanding is that if we approve the zoning, the county ordinance will require the client to abide by the submitted ordinance.
That's what it says, that's right. And we've written letters where we've questioned the ability of the county or the village to enforce that, but that's what the ordinance says, which is why I think it would be redundant to include it here. We're asking you to look at this just as a zoning case. The requirement will be there. The annexation issue is one, I'll categorize it two ways. One is a question of control. We are outside the village now. Our planning is for populations that are much beyond the borders of Mohammed. There are people who are depending upon us for the supply of their water, their sanitary issues, and it's going to be many, many years before Mohammed expands to the point where it would take into their own jurisdiction what it is that we do. We have people who are depending upon the county for representation, and we are part of that whole process. So there's a control issue, whether we want Mohammed to be in control, and we think that as a unit of government, that at least allowing us to do this by an intergovernmental agreement, where I've told you, other than the annexation question, most everything probably will fall by the wayside as issues, we think that's the better way to go. My second point is really a spring off of that, and that is basically respecting the integrity of a unit of government. This is not a private developer that we're talking about here. This is a unit of government. And that has come to the table, saying, other than the fact that we don't want to move into your community and be governed by your ordinances as a member of the community, we basically said we want to cooperate in every way that you're asking, so all we're asking is that we not have to annex. So I guess the question could be expressed the opposite way to Mohammed. Why do you want us to, there's no tax revenue that comes from this. We are a governmental entity. Why do they want us to annex if we're saying we'll jump through just about every hoop they could put before us?
I think you have to follow. I guess that gets to the heart of the matter, and certainly, I mean, the county facilities here are subjected in many extents to the jurisdiction of the city of Rubena. We're annexed to the city, and we pay stormwater fees, and we pay various assessments of the city of Rubena. But the city of Rubena certainly, that doesn't give the city of Rubena authority to control any county's business, nor does it give the village of Mohammed the ability to control any other business located within this town of ours. So I guess I'm curious, have you received, you have some basis for the, to assume that just because your physical plant might be annexed to the village of Mohammed, that you would somehow be obligated to provide water service to the village of Mohammed, or somehow be under a greater obligation to the village than you would have been any other employer in Mohammed?
No, I can't say that. That's, that would not be the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Stan?
Well, when I was looking at this, and I had a lot of questions, Dave, the plant's been there, what, forty-some years, forty-six? And, you know, time's gone long, there's new laws and regulations, EPA stuff that has come in. It's operated apparently well, there's never been anything in the paper or any discussion at our level here. I always looked at, you know, we're the county board, and our rural constituents, people out there look at us for guidance and help in issues like this. Annexation is something that we all talk about, it happens, it comes apart. But when I looked at this issue, and I called John Jay and spoke with these gentlemen tonight, I'm looking at it as they're wanting to do the right thing. They've been in operation this long, they're coming to us to get the zoning they need. Their other battles will be their battles, but we are here to look and say, is it fair to rezone this for what they're asking us? Because right now, they are their own entity, they are wanting to improve what they do, they're providing a good service to the folks they serve, and it's a service that needs to be there. So my contention would be that they are the representatives that we need to look at and say, okay, they really don't have any other place to turn, unless they are annexed, and then yes, Mohammed, in my mind, based on law, would have some say-so on what they do and don't do. But in the meantime, who's operating this plant, putting their money into it, and keeping it up? So I'm strongly in favor of allowing them to move forward with this, based on what the zoning board has said, and let the other entities that may or may not have an argument tackle them as they go along. I don't see where the county, and of course, I'm no attorney, but I pretend to be at times, because I save myself some money. But I don't see where the county, really, other than supporting the folks that are coming to us for help and saying, geez, you know, you've done a good job, you really are doing a great service to those you serve, we've had no complaints for forty-some years, let's move on, let's do the right thing sometimes, instead of saying, well, we got this, we're worried about litigation, or, you know what, people sue all the time. Does it work? Maybe not. And I think it's about time, in my mind, and I say it all the time, common sense kicks in.
Mr. Shaw?
Just a few quick comments. I think it gets down to, the majority of the users are unincorporated Mohammed, and I think that's where your expansion's going to be, unincorporated Mohammed. And that's where this body is basically the only government, aside township government, that those water users have. Obviously, the village has their board, and also they have county board representation too, like everybody in this room lives in this county. So I think it's just a matter of a simple fact that this particular board, Sangamon Valley Water, wants to stay outside the city of Mohammed, and I don't see why they shouldn't be allowed to. I think it's perfectly fine. You know, there are some circumstances in this county, and this is one in particular, where we don't have a lot of utilities out in the county, but this is one that's out in the county. You know, and I can harken back to what American Water did with the city of Champaign, and myself and Mr. Moser went to that. That public hearing for the city of Champaign were severely rebuffed, and so was the county and the county zoning administrator, and that's fine, American Water wanted to do that, but the landowners and the unincorporated Scott Township didn't have a say, and they don't have a say in the city council of Champaign. They can go speak in public comment for five minutes, and they can go sit down and be quiet. So I think it's perfectly fine, I don't see a problem with this, and I'm in vocal support. Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm saddened by this, to be real honest. Of course, I live in the Mohammed area. I think we need to remember that the Sangamon Valley Water District's there for one reason and one reason only, Mohammed wouldn't take it. And when they approached Mohammed at that time, I don't know that Mohammed could have had the facilities, I'm assuming they didn't have the facilities to do it, but they didn't really want it, didn't move on. So these folks didn't have any choice but to form this water district, and they have, and it's worked very well. What really saddens me when I read this document is that their statements of fact is just absolutely almost ridiculous, and I'm not going to read through them, I would encourage you all to do that. Some of them are just flat not true, and some of them are maybe, and may, and shall, and could be, and it's just a very poor reason to do that. I won't reiterate the fact that we are some of these folks' only voice, but what really touches my heart and hurts me is that, I don't remember what year it was, but Mohammed's water system went down, completely down. They didn't have any water. And guess where the water come from? Two farmers that I happen to know personally, in semi-trucks, hauled water from Sangamon Valley Water to Mohammed, and kept those folks in water for several days. Did Sangamon Valley Water charge them? I don't even think they charged them for the water. We didn't charge them for the hauling, the folks that was doing the hauling. There's been cooperation out there. There is no reason, and an intergovernmental agreement couldn't have worked in this case if they would have set their mind and remembered what Sangamon Valley done for them at one point in time. It's all about control, it isn't about, there is not one thing that allowing this to move forward is going to hurt Mohammed. Not one thing. So why would we not support the people it's asking us for support tonight? I encourage you to let us move this on forward, please.
Mr. Ralph?
Being possessed of the evil deed this morning. I see this thing as an opportunity for Mohammed to get a lever and force people to annex. You can't get the water for control. And we have all kinds of battles over annexation.
Mr. Ezra?
If we are just going to look at this as zoning, I don't see a problem with it, because where else are you going to expand? Are you going to go out and build a whole new plant? The mains that are already in, that's where they come to. Now granted, they're going to maybe extend it just a little bit to reach the new built, the new plant, so it doesn't make sense to not expand where they're already at. The people have to get the water somewhere. Having worked around in Mohammed, from what I know, I don't believe Mohammed, the water facility in Mohammed itself has the capacity to feed, just totally eliminate this plant and feed the rest of it. It all ties into the fact that, as far as I'm concerned, this is something that we need to approve and go from here.
Mr. Carter?
I can't, how did Mr. Moser? First thing you do if you create in the subdivision, you go into the village, the city, commits, the sewer, the land availability, and you got to go with the board, because they got to give you organization. So now how can they go and get this far and don't have no kind of agreement with the board? It don't make no sense. How did that happen?
The village wasn't out there at that time, Lloyd. The village wasn't out that far at that time.
Well, somebody had to be in charge.
No cross-conversation, please. Sorry, Mr. Carter, continue. Are you finished, or would you like to continue?
I just got a couple more things to say.
Please do.
Somebody had to be there to authorize them to full head with the project. Because you got to, you got to know the land is available, the sewer, the street, the water, all these things got to come in play. And I can't see how they can pursue this without the village board or the city or somebody giving them a realization to do it.
Is there anybody in the first round who hasn't spoken yet, would like to speak to this issue? All right, let's start again. Chris was the first, and then John, I think Patsy, or him, please, please.
Without objection, I have a couple of questions for the representative of the village of Mohammed, if you're willing to speak to this.
Well, the gentleman from Mohammed, please take the podium. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Bob Martin of the village of Mohammed, I serve as the village planner for the community.
You don't have to say it like that.
Okay, well, I can lie to them.
Thanks, sir. I'd just say a couple of specific questions in comparison to your protest. One of the issues in the protest went to interpret as a street ban, concerns over this Middletown Drive, which is purely built as a stub street, terminated at the northeast corner of the, of the subject parcel based on site plan. Obviously, there's a big church to the west of this, and utilities to the south, this is something of a, of a landmine parcel in appearance. Is there an area plan that indicates what was supposed to have done to this Middletown Drive?
The extension of Middletown Drive was to extend through the condominium development to the north, to attach to Gulf Road, and that was approved in an area general plan for the woods subdivision, somewhere in about 1984, and that's still, area general plan is still valid.
So there's an area plan that covers, is that area plan proof the subject property?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so the street was essentially was supposed to head west and then turn north.
And we're concerned that the northeasterly portion of the rezoning request would terminate that access, and it's, right now, it's not proposed to be dedicated to, for public right-of-way, and it will essentially serve as a spite strip for future development that could occur through Middletown Drive to the north.
What's your zoning of the subject, of the area involved with the subject parcel that's currently in progress?
That's actually in the county. The subject property is abutted by the village limits on the west with R1 zoning, residential zoning, and on the south with a mix of residential, urban, and R1.
Will you have a good comparison of the plan?
Yes, we do.
What's that showing?
It would be shown as residential.
Okay. Change direction a little bit. Is the concern, is the concern of the village over this, that, I guess, to what extent do you feel that this property you're not annexed to the village, how does that affect the village's ability to annex other property?
Well, it would essentially create a spite strip between the unannexed tracks to the west and the condominium development to those east. We don't have annexation agreements on those tracks right now, and that would essentially, with Twin Oaks subdivision, the church property, this property being out of the village limits, and the existing multi-family apartment developments along Middletown Drive, we would essentially have a preliminary block to annexation to the north.
And then I guess one more question, with more of our policy. What's the, what's the, I guess, other than these two things I've identified, maybe the street pattern issue and the ability to zone to annex around this thing, I mean, what are, do you see the village suffering if not, if this facility continues to operate without annexation? Are you, do you attend, is the idea here of the village of Mohammed tends to somehow exert more authority over this, or brings utility into the village?
I don't think that's the case. Our intent is.
Why do you care so much about annexing this property?
Well, I think, first off, we've talked about the need for the lack of the spite strip of Middletown Drive. We've talked about resolving the existing unauthorized subdivision for the purchase of their land in 1999, and the unpermitted construction of a water treatment plant over that line through the county. We don't feel that the, although we appreciate the services and the, that are provided by Sangamon Valley Public Water District, they don't have a history of intergovernmental cooperation on securing appropriate permitting and securing appropriate subdivisions for the developments they do have. I think when we look at our development standards in comparison to the county's, our development standards are a little bit more strict, and I think that we believe that areas that are being developed directly adjacent to the village limits should be, follow our development standards, including stormwater attention, parking, paving, and those types of things.
But those are, those are in your subject ordinance, right?
No, they're actually in our site plan.
Oh, that's a subject.
It's a mix of both subdivision and site plan.
Okay, so by virtue of, by virtue of the county's ordinance, originally the county ordinance that would require the commissioner to comply with the subdivision ordinance, they would not be required to comply with the.
They wouldn't be required to follow our zoning ordinance and, if they were required to do the subdivision, they would be, they would need to comply with our stormwater management ordinance.
Thank you.
Patsy?
I thought you said somebody before.
Yeah, what's, no, okay. So, Patsy.
To continue along on the other question, Mr. Albers. To continue along with your questions, one of the things that I remember about in the pair, this is not annexed, this study is impressive for the situation that will then come to Mohammed.
I, I think they're requesting something special, that a normal property owner would not be able to get that benefit for. In essence, the village of Mohammed made mistakes in the eighties of allowing major rural residential development directly adjacent to its village limits, and didn't have policies in place that required annexation upon subdivision approvals. That policy is now in place, and this is a policy that the village of Mohammed feels very strongly, that when we do a subdivision directly adjacent to the village limits, that those properties should be annexed and should follow the development standards of the municipalities.
May I have a follow up? Because I'd like to, I'd like to hear the Mohammed side of the issue of the pre-annexation agreement we've heard from the other side, so that we hear-
Early indications that we had was that the Sangamon Valley Public Water District would never, ever, ever annex to the village limits. So, there's, there's not much of an intergovernmental agreement if that's the intent of the opposing party, I guess.
John, then Stan, John.
Thank you. The, Bob pretty much makes the case, they want the annexation without any consideration for the need. There's a need for this, there was a need for this to begin with, because that's why they're there. They were there before all of this building was around them. And alls they're asking is to extend where they're already at, they're not going to change the dynamics of the neighborhood all that much. Now, they're not going to fit that, the new regulations that Mohammed has put forth. But I would like to remind you all, we've been in the same thing just a few months ago to a little guy called Jesse Heedy out on West Church Street Road out of Savoy. The same scenario, the village didn't want them to, to add on to their building, they were in our area of responsibility. The village put to protest, and fortunately, we wrote it, and they were able to go ahead and continue. This is the same thing, except this is a public need, and this public need's been there since 1966. It didn't just pop up yesterday, and there is nothing that's going to hurt Mohammed if, if Middletown Road don't go anywhere than, than where it is right now. That's not the end of the world. So I just, I don't understand why we wouldn't support this need for this community.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Stan?
Well, I guess when I heard the gentleman speaking about the annexation and that, and what John just said, we hear it all the time. Rentals had its fair share of the fates leaving, and people wanting this, and I live out in a rural area, and years ago, I wished I would have been annexed, and I'm glad I'm not. But, you know, the interest wasn't there. I guess in my mind, it's sort of simple and common to me, and I hear all this other talk, but they've done the right thing, and, and the folks aren't complaining. You know, they're not coming up saying, geez, we wish Mohammed would give us these services and take us in. A, a lot of times, I look at it, it's Big Brother coming in, they see a pot of gold, or some way to get more fees and taxes, if Max Mitchell was here. And I just think it's, it's sad that if they're putting out the olive branch and saying, hey, we're willing to work with you guys, and we'll sign an agreement, but yeah, I'd be upfront too. I don't want someone lying to me and saying, no, we don't ever want to be annexed. Why lie about it? That's their right, and that's what we need to support. It seemed like to me that Champagne or Van and all these towns just think, all these folks have been out here living their life, doing the right thing, working hard to keep this area up. Yeah, they may burn something they're not supposed to burn once in a while, or whatever they're doing, but the bottom line is, they enjoy their way of life, and then Big Brother's going to come in and say, oh, this looks good, and we need more revenue for our roads and our other stuff. And I understand planning, because I hear it from Patsy, but where, and I hear what you're saying about they did things they shouldn't have done, but coming in here forty-some years later and crying wolf is way too late. You had forty-some years to start correcting that, and no one took, took the jump. So I'm saying here that these folks deserve our support, and if the other entities want to jump in and get their high-priced lawyers like they do out of Chicago or wherever, good luck.
Gerald?
I just wanted to, A, remind the board that we're only dealing with the zoning issue of which the county rules. We don't control what the village of Mohammed does. Right now, this is whether it meets our zoning requirements to make the expansion happen. From my reading of it, I think that's an issue they'll have to fight out, but as far as the county, I agree with Mr. Jay, that we had this issue two months ago, similarly, and of course, the city of Champagne couldn't tell us what to do on the county, and we are the only representation of the county. This is a pretty clear thing for me, and I'd like to call the question.
Second. Okay. I'm sorry. Let's call the question, answer the second. Okay.
All in favor, all in favor?
Call the question. You want your roll call?
No, just a moment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Say it again, twice. You need to vote on calling the questions. Yes. I'd like to have a vote on call the question, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye.
As for roll call in the underlying motion before the board, I just make an address.
Okay.
So this motion passed.
Second. Okay, roll call, please. And what, what are we voting on, just on?
On the most- I would make motion.
On the residents. Will somebody tell us what the motion, what, what, what votes on this motion are, yes or no?
Yes, it's on, it's on A zoning case 717, AM dash 12. That's what we're voting on right now on the roll call. Please, roll call.
DJ? No. Richards?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wyble?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Ammons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Burksen?
Yes.
Betts?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cowart?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Hertz?
Yes.
Langenhain?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
That it? Motion, Garrett. Thank you. Let's move on to B. Final recommendation approval of text amendment to the Champagne County zoning ordinance, excuse me, ordinance. In zoning case 71080-12, amend the Champagne County's lease of petitioner to the Champagne County zoning administrator. Before we go to discussion, the committee made a preliminary recommendation for the approval of this recommended text amendment at the September 4th, 2012 meeting. No comments have been received from municipalities or townships, and no comments have yet been received from either the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resource Conservation Service, State Conservationists, or the Illinois Department of Agriculture. What about motion?
So, who?
Second, Azri, second, Keebler. Discussion, please. Patsy?
Information question to Mr. Paul. Are we obliged to receive a comment from the Illinois Department of Agriculture on this?
Susan Monte has been in touch with both the NRCS and Illinois Department of Agriculture, and we actually got some, a little different information than we got previously. The way we understand the process will work is, at this point, once the county board, and Susan, correct me if I get something wrong here, at this point, they're okay with the county board moving ahead, and if the county board does adopt the draft lease, then they would like to have the county board chair send the, a letter to the NRCS State Conservationists stating that, requesting that this be added to the list of leases. And again, both of these organizations have reviewed this draft lease already. In fact, more than one time, they, their review has always been positive, they don't foresee any problems, and they're basically telling the county board to go ahead and let us know when you've adopted it. So that's, that's the latest information we've gotten. It's different than what we were told previously.
Yeah, it's different than what we were told.
Okay, any other discussion on this issue?
Yes, on here.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
Since I got the question called on me last time, I wasn't able to explain the rationale for my vote, I'll be sure to do it now, on this issue. I think we need to move forward on this lease, on these lease changes, I mean, this has been many, many years in coming. There has been some concern expressed about whether lease adequately addresses, adequately values farmland that's used for purposes other than row crops, and I think that is a valid concern, which has been stated here a couple of times, but I don't think we need to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I'd like to see the planning zoning department and the lease process look at that and move forward and see whether we are essentially undervaluing some agricultural land that's worthy of, of protection because it's used to grow crops other than corn and soybeans. But clearly, what we're proposing to do here is a lot better than what we have on the books right now, and I'm wholeheartedly in support of it.
Thank you. Astrid?
I agree with him wholeheartedly.
I'm sorry.
I agree with him wholeheartedly on the smaller pieces of land. If we're interested in local farming and so on, I think we ought to consider that issue.
Thank you.
There's no one earthly thing in this lease that prevents somebody from farming that way. We've got three of those out there by me, and they're all zone agriculture, and that's what it is. But they're in the middle of the country. If there's twenty acres out there, like there is on Cottonwood Road north of 150, about six miles, there's an organic certified grower out there with twenty acres, and if when he's gone, what are we going to do? Say that's organic, it's in the middle of, of a section of farmland. If he wants to sell it and go back to row crop, what are we going to do with it? Tell him he can't? There is nothing. I've, I've had two of them out there by me that have been work truck patches for years, and they, they've decided they don't want to do it anymore, and it's gone back to farmland. There's no reason, they can't do that anywhere they want to, whether it's outside this building or square out on the Vermillion County line. It's, it's an accepted practice as agriculture.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. I'm going to miss you.
Chris? I just had to respond to that. I mean, I agree, and I want to make it clear, I'm not saying we need to protect property used to grow smaller crops from being used to grow row crops. I'm just saying that if we have a system that purports to decide how valuable something is as farmland, we need to make sure that we're also including the types of smaller parcels that might not be included as considered valuable farmland and, considered with regard to development pressure, just because those aren't large farms. I certainly agree with your statement.
Okay, we have any further discussion? All right, let's move ahead. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion, Garrett. Now to C. Final recommendation for approval of a text amendment to the Champagne County zoning ordinance in zoning case 71180-12, to amend the Champagne County zoning ordinance by changing the definition of best-pronged farmland. Champagne County zoning administration, down this road before. Zach Ezri, first.
Zach.
I'm sorry, where's the second? Mr. Carter? Thank you. Any discussion on this? We've been here before quite often. Anybody have a discussion on this issue? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. Motion, Garrett. Was there no on there?
Yes.
Okay. Huh? There wasn't any?
Yes.
Okay. Direction to the zoning initiative regarding proposed text ordinance amendment to implement Land Resource Management Plan 4.22, 4.23, 4.24, and 4.35. Can I have a motion?
Someone?
Jan? Second?
I'm sorry.
Second by Mr. Langenhain. There was a hard copy of an updated revised version of the staff memo regarding this issue agenda item. If you look on the last two pages, the only changes are the underlined portion of the paragraphs. There are one, two, three, four paragraphs, and that's the only change to this item. Is there any discussion on this? Ms. Petrie?
Yes. I wish we had had more time to read this.
We sent it electronically to the-
And what I see on page, page one of one, is what it's numbered, on what we have handed to us is that there is no F, whereas on page 100 in our packet, there is an F. Is there a reason that was eliminated?
That draft in the packet was incorrect and in error, essentially.
So you never wanted that F there on page one?
That is correct, it was placed there in error. This current draft, this current memo contains the changes that we proposed.
Okay. Good.
The reason the F is not included is, the second part of F, we've already admitted the ordinance, and that was, that's done. The first part of F, Susan and I discussed this, and we cannot make the kinds of distinction that the first paragraph under F calls for at a staff line. If sometime in the future, the committee wants that first part of F to be realigned, that's going to be a difficult undertaking, and we'll need some specific guidance, and it was just too complicated to do at this time in the fiscal year. So, yeah, the second part has already been done. The first part, more difficult, we're willing to do that in the future, but to propose it at this late in the fiscal year would just not be a good idea. We did not want to actually propose that, and we sent this first copy out by mistake, that's why we corrected it.
Okay. May I have a follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the questions I had on that, even though it's not here, if I could ask that question. Part two, what I wanted to pursue is, where it says the site is well suited overall, does that open up the door for somebody to come in and petition the ZBA for a special use so that indeed then the site becomes suited overall, the way that is worded?
Well, again, our ordinance already requires for a special use permit in the rural districts. If it's on best-pronged farmland, it already has to be posted.
Any other discussion on this issue? All in favor? Oh, sorry, Keebler.
D, sorry, two D, negative effect, effect? Effect is a verb versus.
No, it is effect.
It's affect?
No, it's effect.
It is, it's supposed to be effect, but it is affect in this.
Word judgment.
D, two D.
Five of them.
Six to one word.
Oh, I see.
That was not a five.
Got it.
Thank you, Mr. Keebler. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. I've got a call on this one. Have a roll call, please.
I'll call for it.
Have a roll call. Second. All right. All in favor, roll call. All right. Roll call, please.
No. Richards?
No.
Schrader?
No.
Wyble?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Ammons? Anderson?
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little?
Anderson?
Yes.
Burksen?
Yes.
Betts?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cowart?
Yes.
Esri?
No.
James?
No.
Jay?
No.
Kibler?
No.
Hertz?
Yes.
Langenhain?
Yes.
Maxwell?
No.
McGinty?
Yes.
Moser?
No.
O'Connor?
No.
Time?
Time.
I'm sorry. Time, so it fails.
Fail.
No.
McGinty?
Yes.
Moser?
No.
Connor?
No.
Time.
Time.
I'm sorry.
Time.
So it fails.
Fail.
It failed? Okay. Motion, Garrett. Mutha report, we had it in front of you for focus one twelve. Motion received, placed on file. So move by Ms. Jane, second by Key Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Garrett. Opposed? I have no other business.